Good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to our City Commission Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Lawrence Branch, NAACP, Black30, and Loudlight. My name is Taylor Overton, and I'm the co-founder and president of Black30. The NAACP, in partnership with Black30 and Loudlight, has been a very compatible partnership, as all of our organizations are nonpartisan. Our political activities are focused on voter registration, voter education, and most importantly, voter turnout to the polls. Today's forum offers a special opportunity to ask the candidates questions that are focused in the interest of our communities that we so proudly serve. So thank you to the NAACP and to Loudlight for partnering with Black30 on this initiative. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the power of minority and women-owned businesses that made this event possible. You might have sampled the pastries at the table. This was help-- we were provided help with this from Cheryl's Custom Treats, Cleo &amp; Leo Baking, as well as the Pastry Lounge. You might have noticed the backdrop, as well as some of the signs and the balloon art. This was developed by Kianti Venice, all women and minority-owned businesses based right here in North Kansas. So round of applause for those who helped. We'd also like to say thank you to the volunteers from each organization who helped prepare this forum. And a special thank you to the Kansas Black Leadership Council and Target for their financial sponsorship of today's event. We could not have pulled this off without them. Now let's review this afternoon's format for our candidates and the audience. The questions that I will ask were developed by the NAACP, Black30, and Loudlight members. Each candidate will receive-- each candidate received-- I hope-- had nods candidates, yes, they have-- received the questions in advance. Each candidate will have a specific amount of time to answer the questions. Our time people will let the candidates know when they have 15 seconds left to respond and when the time is up. We respectfully ask that each candidate stay within the time allotted for each question. I will rotate who gets to answer the questions. Then the next person will answer, and so on. The seating arrangement that we have today was determined randomly by drawing names. There will be no additional questions from the audience. Instead, we have asked the candidates to stay after the formal questions and answer during an informal meet and greet and additional pastries. We will not judge your consumption. That will take place out in the hall. Black30, the NAACP, and Loudlight cannot endorse candidates, but the candidates are free to share campaign materials, seek volunteers, and answer additional questions informally during this time. Now let me introduce our Lawrence City Commission candidates. In order as seated, we have Amber Sommers, Dustin Stumblingbear, Justine Burton, Courtney Shigley, and Mike Dever. Thank you so much for your participation. Brad McCalldie is unable to attend the forum today, but he was able to send us a message in his absence. I am disappointed to miss this opportunity to answer the questions posed by the Lawrence Branch of the NAACP, Black30, and Loudlight. I apologize for my absence, but I am in Boston visiting my youngest daughter, who attends Boston University for an important event in her college career. But I would like the group gathered to know that the talents that people bring forward from diverse communities of lived experience make communities stronger, and it is my deep desire to do the work to support opportunities that increase equity. I invite anyone who has questions for me about my values or approaches as a commissioner to please feel free to reach out to me directly. That was a statement he submitted prior to today. So with that being said, let's begin. The first question, we will begin with Commissioner Amber Sommers. What are the biggest challenges facing the Lawrence City Commission? And how would you address those challenges?
Check, check, one of the two parts. Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you, NAACP, Loudlight, and Black30 for this afternoon's forum. I'm going to take a different approach to the biggest challenges. I think some of the biggest challenges that we face are actually opportunities. And they're opportunities because it deals with economic development. We call it in the city strategic plan, prosperity, and economic security. If we can secure equity and access in economic development, economic support as it relates to big business, as it relates to small business, commercial business, the whole entire ecosystem, we're moving our community in a way that we are addressing gaps. And there are gaps that we've acknowledged. They are gaps that we continue to move forward with outside of Panasonic or anything like that. I know we'll talk about that later. But we are seeing where-- we're understanding the nuances and roadblocks that we are experiencing in how to bring about new businesses, how to acquire space for businesses, and how do we bring individuals into the economic or entrepreneurial ecosystem. And so as we continue to move that way, we have to look at innovation in current policies that we have, as well as innovations and new opportunities that we have in, whether it's incentives, whether it's policy, and things like that. So we got to continue to attract businesses and jobs in that capacity, as well as being able to move forward with our development code, as well as just different economic policies that we are addressing currently.
Hello. I view a couple of things that we have as major issues facing our city. One of the main ones that's been going on since I first ran in 2017 and before then is housing. The amount of housing we have here, the pricing of housing, and where the housing is located throughout our community. And that's something I know we're going to have to really work on, and that's something that's currently being addressed with our land development code. But that's also something we're going to have to stay on top of as interested individuals. If we want this housing to be able to supply our commercial enterprises and wanting to really build that up in our town, people have a place to live. If people want to start a business, but they can't have any employees who live here, they're not going to get them. They're not going to have any customers who can afford to live here either, because we're also having an issue with the affordable housing stock. And so these are some of the things that we can look to address on with our development code, but also looking at possible with our private developers incentives and being willing to be open to how we can use these sort of benefits of the community. I know incentives package have a real negative image in this town. And so number one, we would have to really not sell it, but ask the questions that you all want to know and make sure as public as possible with these things so that everyone feels we're on the oven up and that we aren't getting screwed over as a community, because that has happened to us before. And these are some of the things that I think I can bring in when addressing some of our issues, is that willingness to push down and not let someone off the hook for something. Thank you.
I'm kind of on the same page when it comes to that. We do need more businesses here in Lawrence, and downtown especially, I think, we do need some businesses. And I think, for me, if you-- I don't see a healthy community if everyone in the community is prosperous. And like Sal always focuses on East Lawrence and North Lawrence as well. Those are places that are just like there. And it seems like everybody has been forgotten that they are there. But that is-- I think North Lawrence is a-- one of the keys to Lawrence being prosperous. But as I say, you know, we do need businesses, minority businesses, all kinds of businesses here too, to be able to have a healthy community. So that's what I see as a challenge.
Yeah, the first one I want to mention, I think, is a positive challenge. And I think we're meeting it, and that's operationalizing our strategic plan. Our strategic plan was created by the public, from input from the public, the greatest amount of public engagement we've ever had on a study or a project. And we're very proud of that. But we do have to operationalize it so that we reflect our commitment to the outcomes. And that's actually good work. It's fun work. It's interesting work. But you also have to be critical of decisions. You know, sort of, we're making a new roadmap. You have to be able to look back at the year before and go, "Yeah, maybe we could have done that a little bit better." And that's actually a quality you should look for in your representatives' ability to go back and reflect and see how they could do better. Another thing I want to challenge-- I'd like to-- not a city challenge, but the question was a city commission challenge. And I would like to share this with the public, because it's not always obvious to people who don't come to commission meetings very often. And that is our trying to balance the expectation and the desire for public comment and public engagement with aggressive and disruptive behavior. And this is important, because so many people have expressed to me that they are afraid to come to city commission meetings because of this kind of behavior. And abusive speech, abusive behavior. And this is not only bad for public comment, but also for people wanting to run, because it's damaging to democracy to have people not want to run because of this behavior.
I think the first and biggest problem we have as far as priorities is the lack of affordable housing, both workforce housing and affordable housing that's available to people who would be eligible. I think when you can balance and provide those kind of options to people, then we're able to provide more services as a community. Because right now, the second most-- probably largest problem is the unhoused and the transient community kind of being looming large in a lot of people's minds. And a lot of the city funds and county funds are being spent in treating those issues. And I think that's one problem I'd like to try to help with. Reducing the tax burden on the community is something that I think we need to focus on as well, because it's just not the cost of the house. It's also the utilities and the taxes associated with that. And I think we have incrementally raised the bar so high, Lawrence has become affordable. And I think the way we can do that is we leverage all the great money we spent, this commissioners have spent, others have spent, on infrastructure and utilities to bring in new jobs and new opportunities to communities, so that we can spread all these costs over a larger base and not be focused so much on our residential community paying the load. But I think sharing our load with everyone and bringing more in for the future.
Thank you. So our second question will begin with Dustin Stumblingbear. How would you balance the interests of unhoused individuals with the community and business interests?
So currently, there is the community plan, a place for everybody, a community plan to end homelessness. This has received public input, not only directly from the business community, but from members of this community at large and members of the unhoused community. There's a lot of programs and initiatives that have been co-opted into that plan that are already being addressed through the Lawrence Community Shelter, through Burton Ash, through the Lawrence Doris County Housing Authority. There's a lot of programs that are also being discussed to put in place. And what am I bringing all this up for? These are all being funded with our tax dollars. All of us are paying them. And this is to help the unhoused. So where's the balance coming in? We're helping those who are unhoused, being able to find connection to services. Transitional housing is being put in place. And we're finding a way to expand other ways to help these individuals at the community shelter, hopefully with a productive co-governance structure that's soon to be available. Thank you.
Justin?
Here I come. I think that we need to focus, I think, on the unhoused individuals and talk to them to see what their needs are. I don't know if people-- I like to talk to people. So being able to find out what it is they actually want, actually need, I think would be something that would be helpful. I think we also need to have them understand that there are rules and regulations that we have in our town, and that sleeping downtown is not a good thing, you know, for anybody. Even when now it's getting cold, it's going to be getting cold. So being able to find a place for these people to be able to have a warm place to stay, I think that's something that we need to look at as well. And we have to understand also that we do have homeless people that really do not want to be housed.
I'm going to thank Dustin for mentioning our plan. In the immediate, I think what we are trying to stay focused on is creating the pallet homes. And the purpose of that is to get people out of all our parks and trails. The balance we lost there is that people don't feel like everyone can use the parks and trails. People are sleeping and camping on them. And that is a fair criticism. So that's why that's one of our first priorities. Secondly, I want to-- we should talk about residency requirements before you say it. I know it's problematic. I know it's problematic. But we need to have that conversation with the community, because the taxpayer does have a reasonable expectation of understanding where their funds go and how those ones are successful. And then the third thing is, we need to have a real-- I think there's a real problem conflating camping downtown, for example. There's no camping on Massachusetts. There are people who sit there all day, but you can sit there all day. So that's not camping, and we need to have a conversation about what that is.
So I've been thinking about this issue for a long time, seven years, since I've had some personal problems that I wanted to try to solve. And I kind of look forward to examining the resources that we're currently spending on all the services that are supplied to the unhoused and transients and people who are in need. I think those are-- and that's something I really want to understand. I want to determine the actual cost for the services to the citizens, because I think that is not clear. I think transparency will make everyone buy into this plan in the future. We all know what it's costing us, and everyone's coordinating their resources together, that the people who are all putting their energy and their time and their money into this are working in the same direction. And I think that's what-- I think a city commission can do and help lead a short-term strategic plan. I recognize as a long-term plan that we are in need of a short-term strategic plan to address who we've got, where they came from, how we're going to serve them, and how we're going to help them get into a position where they can be a productive member of our town or somebody else's.
Thank you. How can the city--
No, this is second.
I was just saying. No one's in labor.
You might have to pass me, because I need more than one minute. But I will say this. This balance is about relationship, and it's not about competing value. When you look at the bigger picture and you step back, addressing the needs of the unhoused speaks to everyone. It speaks to access. It speaks to availability and accessibility, whether it's availability and accessibility of resources, availability and accessibility of housing, availability and accessibility of funds in order to do it. And so addressing the unhoused needs that we have in our community is not a one-size-fits-all asking about it. I did the research on it on the state level, and I can give you receipts that none of you know about. And that's not a flex. That's just facts. Because that's my background. That's the work that I've done. And that's the work I continue to do. But what we have to understand is that the bigger picture of this is about recognizing the role that we can do on a local level and the responsibility that we must give those on the state level. And we've not been asking the state to show and to up the hand on what they need to be doing for us, to help us make this-- for help to help us build and create a program that is successful in changing folks from being unhoused to housed.
Thank you. How can the city commission expand access to affordable housing? We will begin with Justine.
Well, oh. Thank you. See, I would like to see affordable housing in all areas of Lawrence, not just one section of Lawrence, sections of Lawrence. And for me, affordable housing, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what that means. So I've got more questions than answers. But affordable housing, like I said, I always think of a family, a single mother and with children that is looking for some place to stay for her and her kids. So that's kind of the way I look at affordable housing. Also, affordable housing means-- you know, I haven't heard anybody put a number on what that would be, you know, as far as rent. So that's something else that I'd be thinking about. I think affordable housing means, you know, you might be paying $450 or something a month instead of $1,000 a month. So that's affordable housing to me. But I think everything kind of goes downtown as far as housing. But I think we need to spread it out and really make it possible for everyone to-- thank you.
So the city's role so far has been in creating the housing units and leveraging our affordable housing trust dollars. We've already funded 500 units, maybe more than that, to be created over the next five years. So we need to continue doing that. Then the access part is more or less accomplished by our partners, such as Willow or the Housing Authority or tenants to homeowners. And I'm glad Justine brought this up, because a lot of the-- a lot of the attention is given to some of the units that happen in East Lawrence, for example. And they certainly feel put upon in that neighborhood. But if you actually are able to find a map, which the Housing Authority can show you, you will find that it's actually more spread out than you would imagine. And partly because some of those are, for example, in units that are held by domestic abuse partners that address that. And nobody should know where those units are. So they're sprinkled more than you think they are, but absolutely, they do need to be sprinkled all over, including the west side of town.
So I think we should start by continuing to spend the sales tax dollars that the city was smart enough to put in place, and you were kind enough to vote on to put in place for affordable housing. I think they've done a good job this year, especially giving that money out into the community, giving it to our partners. As Courtney mentioned, they really are good at executing these plans and making them available as soon as possible. I think we need to make sure that building code modifications are made in the plan that we're talking about being completed soon. This is a plan I wanted to change a long time ago, and it's going to be done soon. I think it's going to add some density for all of this. It's going to add some choices for all of it. It's going to allow us to use lots that we might not have been able to use before for the same purposes that I know the city has been pushing forward with that initiative. I want to incur its optimization and zoning that allows us to build new construction with affordable housing built in and incentivize any other housing that we can in those new areas.
Sorry, I appreciate what a lot of the previous candidates have talked on. Yes, we are making strides in affordable housing. One, we have the ongoing conclusion of the draft of the land development code that will come online. With that, as to Mike's point, we do need to start looking at our housing policies and how they look in our economic development plan for the city. We have to recognize the state preempted us on being able to-- I should say mandate, encourage inclusion and zoning. That's why mixed-income housing has to be a relationship between a private developer and the city or a public entity. So we have to do work in a public-private relationship of this. And you like in the state to say, "Hey, you got to pitch in on that middle-income housing." We have the market to take care of the market rate. We have HUD to take care of low income. But that missing middle gets no support. So we need them there. Justine, to answer your question, affordable housing means anything that's more-- if it's more than 30% of your income, it's not affordable. If it's more than 10% of your income when it comes to utilities, it's not affordable.
So thank you, Amber, for touching on the utilities. That's actually where I was going to touch on. We've talked about the stock. We've talked about the land development code. Utility bills are absolutely factored when we determine affordable housing. And as we continue, as a city commission, to determine how we're going to take care of our infrastructure for the whole city, we have to calculate utility bills as a portion of our affordable housing cost when we're discussing this. And when we don't-- if we don't, we will never actually address affordable housing. It'll be something we're always going to be chasing after, because we're constantly saying we have to build out, we need to build new infrastructure, we need to build new pipes. But guess what? The rest of us still got to pay for that. And the more we got to pay for, we're all feeling it these last few years. Well, the less people we can put inside the city is the more taxes we all have to bear as we build more infrastructure. And that means our utilities. Utility bills will go up continually. And so that's why it has to be a part of this conversation regarding affordable housing.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Courtney.
This next question will begin with Courtney. What can the city commission do to prepare for the Panasonic plant expansion?
So some of the things that we've already done is to try to identify industrial space for some of the smaller vendors that Panasonic will need and identify who those vendors are, try to attract them. Not just sort of, you know, by approaching them, but also by kind of teaching them about who Lawrence is, marketing ourselves to them. We could capture one or two of those. That would be a huge success. That would bring us jobs. It would also, you know, industrial land is taxed at a higher rate, so that would help with our tax burden on, on the residential side, which is most of us. We've also been, again, trying to leverage our, you know, the way we market ourselves, explore Lawrence to try to reach out to some of the higher-up suits and some of the engineers that will come in these first waves trying to get developed and make sure they understand that we are the cultural and artistic place to be and that we're right nearby and that they can come and spend time and money in our small businesses. And I think that will really capture some good economic benefit.
I think a lot of the communities surrounding the existing plant under construction have stepped up their game and were anticipating this a long time ago and built up some of the subdivisions or eastern play to kind of capture some of the residential housing that might be associated with the Panasonic plant. So I'm going to focus on what we can do, like start finishing out annexing the land and planning the land for new development so we can offer places for people to live. We could also leverage some of our existing office industrial and R and D space that we have. You know, KUIP is really a shining example of partnerships that can really shine the light on the expert technical people we have in here, and I think that will draw businesses here as well because people like to hang around here if they can. Oh, sorry, that was not the end. Oh, I just want to make sure we implement the already approved capital improvement plan because I think that's going to really lead to helping us do some of the things we want to do in the future. Sorry about that.
So there's this interesting meme, if you guys have seen it, it's a guy with his girlfriend and then a couple steps behind him, there's a girl, and so he's looking back at the girl and the girl's kind of looking at him, and then his girlfriend's looking at him like, who are you looking at? So in this example, the guy is the city, the girl that he's looking at is Panasonic, and the girlfriend is the city, is the people in our community. If we get too sidetracked in what we need to do for Panasonic, then we lose sight of the things we need to do for the people in this community. By addressing the things that we're doing now, we are preparing ourselves for Panasonic. In addition to that, we need to start thinking outside of, there are other things that will come in addition to Panasonic. How are we positioning ourselves for that? Mike talked about that a little bit with expansion, whether that's annexation, annexation, annex, I can't say the word right now because we can't, they do, you know what I'm talking about. So expanding that, but also looking at the resources that we already have in our community. If we stay on track with that, we are projected to do the things that we need to do to prepare ourselves for Panasonic. It's the caffeine juice. Sorry.
Don't start a sign.
That's why I love running for office, you get to meet such cool people and interact with them and become friends with them. And going on to this, I'll kind of build off what Amber was saying, that our land development code is setting us up for success going forward. We really could look at using more mixed-use developments along with commercial corridors to take advantage of this as it would be feeding out on 23rd Street, especially going out to a more becoming a cultural icon within the region, and we are that already, but if we can build up these places for people of color to have their businesses, we can really build on this cultural icon that is Lawrence already in a big way.
De Soto and, oh, De Soto and Yiddo are closer than Lawrence to Panasonic, so we really don't know how many individuals or families will come to Lawrence and where they want to live if some decide to settle in Lawrence. And I don't think top executives will want to live in an apartment. I think putting the interest of unknown before the interest of the community, it doesn't sit really well with me. So I think if we, if we build for the future of our community, then anybody that comes in will be included in that as well.
So this next question is very personal to me. Growing up as a child of two minority entrepreneurs who happened to be in the room, so really excited about this question and looking forward to the answers. So knowing that minority-owned businesses are essential to our community's health and culture, what will you do if elected to better serve our needs and concerns? We'll begin this one with mine.
I think commissioner's job is to listen and to communicate, and I think what I would do is try to communicate all of the opportunities that are becoming available to entrepreneurs and to small business owners around Douglas County. I think there are great efforts being put in place, even just last month, we put in place a diversified Douglas County program to help serve people who need help, who can't get other forms of loan, up to $15,000, and that's a great start. I think there's other programs in place as well through Douglas County where entrepreneurs can get matches for up to $45,000 or $50,000. But that requires a bank note, sign off, but it's a guarantee and it's extra money. I think the city needs to communicate all these outward doings to people because I didn't know about many of them until I started running for office. I think without knowledge, then they have no power. And I'm going to help give people power to flourish, especially minority-owned and small business owners who really struggle in these kind of conditions.
We all own here. What I will say is, not what I will do as a commissioner, but what I have done these last two years as a commissioner in relation to minority business, is recognizing that policies impact minority businesses differently and that we've recognized that and we've had those conversations. And yes, it's important for, it's important for all commissioners to understand that. If you lead with saying we need to educate the community and you don't know about that community, you need to first be educating yourself. And that's, again, not a flex, that's one of understanding and recognizing your community. So understanding what policies are out there. We have several policies available to us in queue right now that we can be looking at and reimagining. Our community development block grant is one area that other communities and other municipalities use that to infuse dollars and access and support for minority-owned businesses. We also need to make space and be supportive. It's about not being performative, but recognizing that sometimes the role of, of the city is not to be in the front, but to be the one lifting up the platform for access to these groups.
Again, I agree with Amber on you have to be at least integrated or part of that community to really be able to help members from that community. And I think as a Native American, we are intentionally kept out of opportunities. It's, it's designed that way. The systems are designed that way, as Sister Sally was pointing out too. And what I would look at again is not only how can we help individuals, be able to speak to those individuals across this community to help them be aware, as Mr. Devon was saying, because, it was blunt, some white man tells me, and I ain't listening, this is how it is. But someone who's a person of color, like last week's BIPOC Entrepreneur Workshop that Taylor hosted, was an amazing experience for me to hear other members of my community and their knowledge base and also be able to know my questions were being answered by someone that I could trust and who was actually looking out for me. And so what I do is try and be in those spaces to help more people be aware of it within those communities. Thank you.
Well, as someone that is owner and founder of a non-profit organization here in Lawrence, I can say how you are minorities are left out and just kind of ignored when it comes to getting, getting any kind of assistance. But anyway, so much for that. I guess the first thing I, I would like to do is just sit down and talk to individuals that want to start a business. See where they're coming from, see exactly what it is that they want and need. I'd also like to be able to, be able to partner with some kind of bank or credit union here in Lawrence to get some kind of an incentive package to offer a lot of new businesses that want to open as well. So that's what I'm looking at.
So the city over the years has incentivized very, already wealthy business owners with all kinds of incentives, and so it is entirely possible to use those same kinds of ideas and certainly the same, you know, economic development department to start prioritizing people who actually need the incentives to do the money, to do the projects. And it's just very simple, we just fund projects that are successful. That's our job, is to find, if we can, if we can fund art, we can fund small, we can fund small businesses that are primarily started by people of color, people who don't have access to capital. That's just a priority we need to make and we will make it, you know, such that it connects to our strategic plan outcomes.
What do you consider to be the community's role in police oversight? We will kick this one back over to Amber.
So I've always stated that when it comes to policing, that this is a public health aspect in the social justice piece. So when you understand the relationship of public health and social justice and you then you start to begin to map out the role of community and police oversight. And that police oversight is a part of a bigger continuum of just the role of police in our community. And so starting with community policing, having that relationship, so commute, so our law, our public safety officers, having that brain relationship, whether it's to neighborhood associations or constituency groups within the community, that then elevates us to have another pathway into accountability, which is through our police oversight, which is through our CPRB. So we are moving strides with that. That is not a policy that I think is in its final stages, is in its developing stages. And that, as we continue to move forward with what we look at community policing, then we'll understand how to fortify and strengthen our CPRB.
What do I consider to be the community's role in police oversight? So for me, what I've done is I've participated in a few police ride-alongs with the Lawrence Kansas Police Department. I've also gone through the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Citizens Academy to get a firsthand view of what those people are doing who arrest our, our towns' individuals and also jail them, to see their policies and procedures and how that all factors into this. I've also sat and listened to many of the citizens throughout the community, not only at the CPRB, but also at the current Citizens Work Group, to hear their perspectives on how they felt they were being policed in this community. That way I can have a better idea of how our community is not only feeling, but also the police are feeling on this issue too. Because we, as the city commission, are going to have to listen to all the parties, not just one side, not just the other, and that's how we're going to form our policy and really hearing that. And so I would like more of the community to step up, and I know it's scary, I know it can be threatening almost to be around the police, but if we have, if you have a bird's eye, if you can see firsthand what they're up to every day, where it's easier to really make policy proposals.
About a couple of years ago, I had a police officer follow me from 19th and Harper to 20th and Mass to my office. He stopped and just kind of stared at me until I got into, into my building. That's scary. And so for me, I think we need a public oversight for some of the police, some of the police officers, some of them do a lot, but we still have those few that like to harass. So I'm looking at, I think we're needing to make sure that police are protecting and serving the community and not stalking and harassing.
I wonder why, can I, will I answer you a question that you asked? I do think that the, this community asked for a community police review board, and that's what we're going to give them. It's certainly been a rocky start. I do think the community has a place therefore in police oversight. I'd like to see the community police review board reviewing actual policy, and you know, I have worked with some members of the NAACP looking at, I've read the whole police manual. I've written little notes next to every little thing, what I think could be different. And so I think that's really hard work and it needs to be done, and it needs to be done by them to give us some recommendations. I think they should be reviewing the data that we're already collecting and giving us some recommendations on that. They should be able to review complaints, understanding of course the constraints of employment law, which, whether I like it or not, is reality.
So I think the community is the ultimate arbiter of what the police needs to be, need to be doing in our community. Ultimately, we are the ones who decide because we're the ones paying the taxes and are in charge of their overall pay. So I think the community has a great say in what happens. I think with the advent of the police review board, I believe that that was a good step forward to people who were in need, as Courtney pointed out, that people asked for it and they got it. The question is the effectiveness or the efficacy of that police review board and what they can and cannot review. And to me, I believe in thorough and clear and transparent operations, but I would like a board that has actual authority and power of going to put together great people to consider great things. They need to have the authority and the decision-making ability to actually do something, and so far they haven't really had that chance, and I look forward to seeing that happen.
All right. Next question. In what ways do you think that we can make government and its processes more transparent to encourage constituents to participate, especially those from historically marginalized groups? This question will begin with Dustin.
Just the other week at the planning commission, I watched a white woman stand over the shoulder of a brown-skinned individual, recording him until he got up and left, and then she sat in his spot. How can we make processes more transparent? Number one, those who are running the meetings need to have full control over the entirety of that space and be aware of what's happening and the behavior of the individuals that are happening in that space, whether it's directly in that room or in the foyer where people are sitting and attending and listening to that meeting also. And I think this is a place where, when it's a planning commission meeting, discussion of not only the Lawrence, Kansas having a presence, but also the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, since the planning commission is shared by the county and the city. And I would like to remind everyone that our city does record these meetings, does post them on YouTube, and you can participate via Zoom. As a disabled veteran, I get to do that regularly, but we need to have control, as Courtney said, not only of people who are screaming in public comment of how they treat other people when they are in the meetings. Thank you.
For me, I think being able to talk to people is the main thing. Again, talking and listening is very important. Don't be dismissive when talking to someone. Be transparent about what's going on. People just want to be able to sometimes find a way that they are able to help because it's their community as well, and they just want to be able to have some kind of input. So I'd say, listen more and give somebody, give somebody that platform to help because we do have enough people in this town that would help in any way they can.
I think Lawrence already has and delivers on a pretty high expectation of transparency. We've worked really hard to expand our engagement, with particular attention to marginalized communities. Sometimes we have to look for people who are not involved in local government or have never been involved in local government. As mayor, I was very focused on filling board appointments with new people and fresh perspectives. Believe me, there were very powerful interest groups who did not like that, but I was committed to looking for new people, all ages, all backgrounds, and making sure we didn't have absolutely what we did have, all white boards, all wealthy white boards. We capture all the data on the demographics of the people on our boards, and I was not having any more of that. So, and then lastly, if I have 15 seconds left, on occasion, we may have to find a way to actually pay people from marginalized backgrounds to join these boards because they are single parents and don't have childcare, et cetera, et cetera, and they need to be supported.
Thank you. So when I was on the city commission previously, it was very difficult to get people interested in joining boards because mostly people didn't know that there was openings or they didn't know how to find out. And I think transparency starts with making openings to boards and opportunities to join the city to make critical decisions. And I think the city does a pretty good job of that, but if we're trying to target minorities or a certain group of people that we want diverse opinions from, we should go ask them. So we should look at our demographics. The city knows everything about us. We could easily mail out information to people who are, want to get, may have shown a desire to participate but haven't done so yet, maybe get them involved. And I think part of getting involved is knowing about the opportunity, and I think once you see what opportunities are available, I think it could become easy. I think we need to organize voters. We need to organize votes on important issues. We need to organize votes on important topics for the community and for those people that are marginalized. And I think if we do that, we can empower groups to make change through the elections and through the presence on boards.
I'm going to read from my paper for a little bit. Local government must build with and not for the community. This is the basis of co-government or participatory government. Only offering traditional community engagement approaches is often performative and lacks critical components of inclusivity. Now, several of you all have heard me talk about inclusivity is about access, access to resources and the success of an individual utilizing that resource. So with polarizing discourse, we have to stop thinking that coming to the commission meeting and waiting to give three minutes of public comment is the only way that you could be a part of a participatory government. There are other ways. We have to meet the community where they are. We have to stop talking about the community has to come to us. It is our responsibility as a city, as a commission, to go to the people.
And now we are to our last and final question. So what would you like to say in closing? This will begin with Justine.
Okay, I'm, to be honest, I'm for the community. I'm for everybody in Lawrence, and that's the reason I'm running, to be able to focus on individuals, communities, bringing the communities together, making sure everybody is happy in their community as well. I am not that much of a talker, I'm more of a doer. And so when I see things that are happening, the first thing I want to do is find a way to fix it. So that's why I'm running and hope you vote for me.
I've spent the last four years working to move Lawrence towards greater transparency and conscientious engagement. I don't believe Lawrence wants to return to a time of backroom deals. I don't think Lawrence wants to return to wasteful pet projects that threaten our financial stability. You, the people, have created our strategic plan, our downtown master plan, our joint strategic plan to address houselessness, among other things, and you need people who will fight to stay on track to give you what you've asked for and to address and prioritize your needs as opposed to the needs of special interest groups. groups.
Well, thanks for coming today. I appreciate a chance to talk for more than 60 seconds. It's hard to get everything said in that great a time. And I really see a lot of opportunity for Lawrence. I always have, that's why I settled here in 1981, came back in 1998 and really look forward to trying to help us move forward with some of the plans and the programs that the existing commissions put in place. I want to work with the existing commissioners. I try to create cordial, common relationship with people. I try not to lash out and try to be honest and discuss things eye to eye. And I think that's what it's going to take to move us forward, is communication between commissioners and communication between the public. And I think the only way to do that is to drop down your guard, stop worrying about forces that don't exist and stop worrying about what we can do to solve our problems. I'm on the housing and the untapped issues. I've been studying it for years now. I've been worried about the direction the community's gone and some of our short term goals and managing the over 400 people that are now accounted for in our community that are unhoused or transient. That's over 200 more than it was last time I looked. And I think that's something we need to talk about. Admit that we have an issue and I want to move forward with creating a short term solution to that problem and get those people the help they need. And I think finally, I just want to, I would appreciate your vote. You get three votes. The three of us are going to have to sit together for four more years if we get elected. I think we should treat everyone kindly and respectfully and I'm going to continue to do that if I'm elected. So thanks for sitting here and I appreciate your time.
So I've used this quote a few times this week and I've continuously grown on it. It's grown on me. And it's, "Impatience for victory guarantees defeat." And I feel like we are in a space right now as a community that there is a lot going on. You know, we can say because of the pandemic, dot, dot, dot. And it's a little bit more than that. The pandemic culminated a lot of the things that were stirring up in our community and now we're faced with dealing with them. And that takes a different type of leadership. That takes a different type of commissioner. So when I chose to run two years ago, I ran on the motto of a new leadership for a better Lawrence and I still say true to that to this day. And so what I want to remind everyone is that as we continue to move through this work, you want commissioners, you want a body of elected officials who are wanting to move things forward, where we create a community where everybody lives, works and thrive. And that comes from having a relationship with the community, but also understanding the relationship that your local politics and policies have with the state level and on the federal level. And so I have a background that I enjoy sharing with everyone because it's a unique background. I've been to every part of this state in every different capacity, but what I've learned is that, or when I put those things together, when you have community in mind, great things come. And that comes with understanding the relationship of your community and understanding that relationship that it has with policy. So again, I would be more than honored to be your commissioner again. Thank you.
Growing up, my grandpa was a World War II vet and he was always telling us, pay attention, look over there, see that, see how that factors over there, see that? He's always, his way of getting our attention is popping us upside the head. And as I've grown and joined the military, went to war in Iraq, served two tours over there, came back, you learn and understand how to keep your eyes on the big picture and not lose your shit when things are getting tough. And I've been in some insane situations where all of us had to keep cool heads and continue on with the mission. And as a city commissioner, talking about people who can do things different, a different perspective, I bring that. I also bring that I've been part of the formulation of all the plans that she's talked about. I've contributed to every one of them. I'm currently part of the Affordable Housing Work Group, work of the strategic plan on addressing home, housing in this community. So I understand what we're doing, the policies we're putting together will work to make this happen in this town. I understand the public private partnerships we're building right now in this town to make this happen. I attend all of these meetings, I go to them, I'm able to give you my time to hear what you're saying firsthand, so you don't have to come to the city commission meeting, so you don't have to email me or text me. I'm already amongst you all right now, all the time. I want to represent you on the city commission. I think I can work well with whoever gets elected because I think I'm a pretty amicable guy. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in the board today. As a reminder, the last day to register to vote is October 17th for the November 7th general election. Early voting begins on October 18th and October 31st is the deadline to request the advanced ballot to be mailed to you. Now, we invite everyone to visit with the candidates, check your voter registration and learn more about the NAACP, Black 30 and Loud Flight out in the hallway. Thank you so much for attending.